Reading is called to order. Please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Garza, would you please call the roll?
Yes.
Chair Seberg?
Here.
Vice Chair Stevens?
Here.
Mrs. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Hollingsworth?
Here.
Mrs. Brooks?
Here.
Mrs. Spall?
Here.
Mr. Igbal?
Here.
Mr. Noli?
Here.
Mr. Beepie?
Here.
Thank you. Before we get started tonight, I'd like to recognize some dignitaries in the audience. We have Mayor Davis Younger, thank you for joining us this evening. Councilman Ralph Smith, thank you for joining us. Anna Di Maria is here, representing Manassas Education Association. And I think that's it for now. Dr. Newman, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Yes, we need to add closed session, personnel matter, ratification of personnel.
Thank you. And for this evening's superintendent's announcements and spotlights, Mrs. Radford.
Thank you Chair Seberg, good evening other members of the board, and good evening to everyone that's joined us tonight. I do have one spotlight that I would like to share, and I have a little assistance for that one this evening. So I would like to welcome Mr. Andrew Wasson up to the podium, and he's going to share some exciting news about our OHS band.
Thank you all, good evening. Thank you to Ms. Radford for the invite, as always. So every year, go ahead and stand up there, kids. They don't like attention. Every year, the Virginia Band and Orchestra Directors Association holds a, well, except for last year, holds a yearly assessment as an opportunity for bands across the state to perform and receive feedback. Repertoire is selected from a list of very rigorous music. This year, both the concert band and symphonic band received superior ratings at assessment, even with the challenges of the post-online school year. This achievement is a direct result of quality band instruction and class time allotment at the intermediate and middle school levels, a very supportive school system leadership, and most of all, incredible students willing to work hard for this achievement. And I do have a handful of our seniors from the symphonic band here to represent the students. So thank you all very much for your support, as always. New instruments, all that kind of stuff helps so much, and to you guys for being so awesome. So thank you, congratulations. Also, because of this achievement, along with the Chamber Orchestra and Center Stage Show Choir, of which Anna is a part of both things, the Osborne High School will earn their second VMEA Blue Ribbon for the first time in their history, second time in their history, right? So congratulations again, kids.
I'm going to ask our board members to come on down. And that second news, we're very excited about our Osborne program, and we will have them come back and join us in April, so all the other groups will be able to be here for us to celebrate them as well.
Welcome.
Okay.
Do you hold this?
That's fine. Well, the blue ribbon will be when all the groups come. Orchestra and everybody, yeah, and the choir, yeah, we'll get all of them here in April. I'm going to have to kind of scoot over this. I think, I think I need everybody to scoot in just a little bit. Yes. Okay, much better. Here we go, this way, one, two, three. One, two, three. Now, can you talk around a little bit? Great. All right, thank you all so much.
Thank you, Dr. Newman.
Oh, yes, Dr. Brent will come now with an announcement.
Good evening, Chairman Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, Superintendent Newman. I want to take this opportunity to introduce our newly appointed principal for Metz Middle School, Mr. Gary Morris. I would like for him to come and join me this evening and share a little bit about himself as well. Mr. Morris, I'm going to turn the mic over to you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Brent. Good evening, board, I want to say thank you for this opportunity. I am very excited about this new path in terms of my journey and my career. I've been in education for 26 years and have longed to work at the middle school level. There have been some reasons why I haven't, why I didn't go back down from high school, but my opportunity to work at a secondary school was one that afforded me the opportunity to work with that group, and I've longed for it ever since. I'm excited about the opportunity to bring a family atmosphere to Metz Middle School. I'm excited to work in the, with three men at the leadership level who I truly have been impressed by, have been, one of which I've been mentored by. And I'm just so excited about working alongside and being able to send our Metz Middle Schools up to a former colleague of mine, Mr. Mike Flugrath. It feels like a family even before taking a step into Metz Middle School, and for that, I am very honored. I just want to thank you for the opportunity once again, and I look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you both gentlemen, thank you.
Chair Seberg, I just want to also announce that Mr. Morris has been here working, leading staff, working with the administration there to get things ready for next year. He's hitting the ground running while also performing his day job at the school that he's at now. We will also be announcing a date to have a community night where the Metz community can come and meet Mr. Morris, and soon as we set that date, we'll get it out to the Metz community, and we hope that everyone will have the opportunity to come out and welcome Mr. Morris to the family.
Thank you, Dr. Newman. Next up on the agenda tonight is board committee reports. Do we have any reports?
Yes, Chair. Chair Seberg, the academic committee met on March 15th to receive an update on school, summer school programs for the summer, as well as virtual learning for the 2022 and 23 school year. Both of these updates will be presented to the full board tonight for discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Hollingsworth. No other committee reports tonight. Next up is citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens that wish to speak? Seeing and hearing none, we will proceed. We have a motion for the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as presented.
Amended.
Amended.
Amended, sorry. Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, second by Mrs. Brooks, that the school board of the city of Manassas approve the consent agenda as amended. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. First up on our discussion agenda tonight is virtual learning option for the 2022-23 school year. Mr. Cuffeler.
Good evening Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, members of the board, and Dr. Newman. As Mr. Hollingsworth shared, that we provided a proposal for the virtual option, and I wanted to provide you with some information regarding virtual options moving forward for the 22-23 school year. So this right here is our current virtual enrollment. We have provided, we currently have 82 students that are enrolled in Virtual Virginia. Virtual Virginia is our partner that provides the virtual instruction for our students. So you can see that the distribution of students across K through 12. We have 35 students in K4, 10 students currently enrolled in grades five and six, 20 students in grade seven and eight, and 17 students in grades nine through 12, for a total of 82 students for the spring semester. So, thinking about the financial impact that the Virtual Virginia, it is currently, the fees that we pay for students, students do not have any out-of-pocket fees for the virtual option that they're enrolled in right now, is based on the local composite index. So Manassas City Schools is .3611, which places us in band one, which is the most discounted rate for students. And so the cost per students per semester that we are currently provide is K5 is $1,325, and six through 12 is $125 per course. So the Virtual Virginia, what we have paid towards virtual instruction towards, for this year, this school year, the first semester was $134,775, and then semester two, we have had, due to some enrollment, we had $5,475, and then we're currently working with Virtual Virginia because there were some errors on the latest bill, but it's going to cost us around another $100,000 for the spring semester. So what we have spent this year on virtual options for students is around $240,000 approximately for virtual instruction. So thinking forward to the 22-23 school year, we are, would like to continue to offer Virtual Virginia as our virtual school option. We would like to make it contingent upon state funding. Currently, right now, Virtual Virginia, we have used grant funding to provide the funding for the virtual option, and based on some feedback from the academic committee, we have included that as part of the requirement. If we, if we do not, if our funding goes down from the state, then we would look at potentially not offering virtual as an option. But if we do move forward with the virtual option, we would like to include some stipulations. Any student that would enroll and request virtual would have to be in academic good standing in all of their courses, a C or better. They would have to have good attendance, strong attendance, and that we would also like to offer the option for any health concerns of a student or someone in their family, and they would provide the documentation for them to enroll in the virtual option. And so with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mrs. Stevens?
Yeah, quick question, Mr. Cuffeler, do we know what the other school divisions are doing next year? We didn't know when we had the academic committee meeting. Do we have any idea yet what the other school divisions are doing?
So we do, so some of our surrounding jurisdictions are not offering a virtual option next year. They have said no to that.
And typically, correct me if I'm wrong, but parents can independently register their children for Virtual Virginia, but then they are required to provide the funding for that?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And then, when it's self-funded by parents, is it funded, do parents pay the same fee that we would be required to pay, as in the tiers?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so it would be that same discounted rate?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Will you reiterate the health, this is the first time I'm actually seeing your presentation, I've seen it online, but reiterate the health component you just spoke of?
Sure. So for any student that who has a health concern, medically fragile, or if there's someone in their house that would be medically fragile, if they provided us with some documentation stating that, we would offer them a virtual option.
No matter whether the state funded or not?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
But at this time, there's no state funding set aside for Virtual Virginia?
That is correct, and we're still waiting to hear, obviously, from the budget from Virginia, from Richmond, so. The other thing I would mention is for any student who is medically fragile, who has an IEP, and if an IEP team were to decide that that was best for the student, then we would certainly provide that as well.
We have a question from our student representative, Ms. DeBeepie.
Hi. The question we have was, when it comes to like the city of Manassas or the county, at what point in the year would you guys see where, like, virtual school would have been chosen? Like, I've been discussing, like, how the county gets with one of those, like, well, virtual school, is it, like, provided anymore, or is that going to be something that is going to be considered?
So I think it's going to be dependent upon the current situation and what we're seeing in terms of numbers of students that are requesting it. Certainly, we would get feedback from the board and make a decision, you know, for what we want to do in the future, but for right now, we felt like it was best to continue to offer a virtual option with some stipulations, because what we have seen is students who do not have good attendance, a virtual option is probably not what's best. And we obviously want all of our students back in person, and so for the immediate future, for at least for next year, we wanted to offer that, and I think it'll be a year-to-year decision moving forward.
Any other questions? Up into my right? To my left, Mrs. Spall?
Hi, I was just curious, I don't think that I know, what is the current criterion to be eligible? Is it just medically fragile children?
So currently, any student for any reason could enroll in virtual.
Okay.
So there's no, there's no requirement, they don't have to provide documentation. If a parent let us know in the fall or the spring that they wanted to choose virtual, they were allowed to do that.
So as long as they met a deadline, then that was allowed by us?
Correct.
Okay. Wonderful, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I think that's it. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Great, thank you.
Let's see, next up will be Summer School Update. Dr. Kramp.
Good evening, Chair Seberg, Vice Chair Stevens, Dr. Newman, and members of the board. I am excited to be here this evening to provide you an update around summer planning and summer school offerings. We'll start by talking a little bit about Osborne High School, and then shift to K8. At Osborne High School, our regular summer school will be offered June 13th through July 21st. This will be offered Monday through Thursday, due to the division closure on Fridays this summer. We're still working to finalize the actual timeframe for that, around a couple of different parameters, but certainly we will have a designated timeframe. We are also running again our ESOL Academy this summer. The dates for that will be June 13th through June 30th, again, Monday through Thursday. The focus in our ESOL Academy is on language development for our Level 1 and 2 ESOL students, and the ESOL Academy will be in-person, and I'll share with you how the regular summer school will happen on the next slide. So this summer at Osborne, we're providing two different opportunities for our students, what we are calling redemption opportunities rather than credit recovery, trying to put a little bit more positive spin on that experience. But we will be offering that for various courses over the summertime. We will also be offering an SOL boot camp prior to retesting our students who need to, you know, re-attempt the SOL assessments for credit and potentially for graduation. We have students who will need both courses and SOL boot camp and retesting, and students who may just need one or the other. The redemption opportunities this summer will be in-person, and there will continue to be no fees for students to take advantage of any coursework that they may need to re-attempt over this summer. We are also offering acceleration opportunities. Last summer, we did offer Health and PE 9 and 10, if students wanted to take advantage of doing that in the summer, and potentially opening up space in their schedule for different coursework over the next several years that they are with us. So we are still offering that, but decided we wanted to expand the acceleration opportunities for our students this summer. So it will include some academic courses, as well as electives, and again, the Health and PE. We are still finalizing exactly which courses we feel like we can offer for acceleration here this first time out of the gate, as we offer that extension. But those courses will be online through EdMentum, so different from the redemption opportunity in-person, they will be online. EdMentum is the provider that we have used for several years at Osborne High School. And the students who are attempting acceleration opportunities will be monitored and followed by an Osborne staff member, similar to how we operated a summer last year, where students were online, but teachers were following progress, monitoring that they're turning in assignments, reaching out and offering support if the students seem to be getting behind or struggling. We will offer that for our students who are in the acceleration pathway. We are exempting all fees for the first class of acceleration for our students, and if they want to take two or more, there will be a fee attached to those additional courses, and the fees are listed there, those are approved fees within our fee structures. So at the K8 level, a summer school will be a three-week experience this summer, June 13th through June 30th, again, Monday through Thursday, time to be determined. We have a cross-content team that's been planning the summer school experience for this upcoming summer since late November, and you can see there, there's a great representation of contents, our support departments like ESOL and Special Ed, as well as some of our electives and our Health and PE content specialists. So we've been meeting about every two weeks since late November, and we did gather input from previous summer school teachers in the process to just hear more about what they found successful, things that they feel like need to be revised, or, you know, or edited in any way, and we've used that feedback throughout the process. We are centralizing our summer school once again. There was a time that every school hosted their own summer school, but we moved away from that many years ago and into a more centralized site, just helps to provide services, transportation, food service, kind of pool the teachers who are willing and able to teach our, you know, teach during the summer. So we will again offer that central experience. Our K through four students will be housed at Baldwin Elementary, and then our 5'8" students will be at Metz Middle School. Those, you know, locations are determined based on a number of factors, including maintenance projects and things that are happening in the summer at our other buildings, as well as, we wanted our two summer school locations for K8 to be in close proximity, because we are revising the summer school experience to be more project-based, and I will talk about that in just a second, but part of having a project-based experience is a final product and a public product that the students present, and so we wanted the opportunities for students to potentially visit each school and share public products with one another, and we also wanted close proximity to Old Town, because we are working to try to incorporate some visits to some places in Old Town as we bring students the projects. So, as I said, we're trying to provide a more engaging, but still targeted experience to our students over the summer school three-week timeframe. So the majority of our time will be spent in a project-based experience, and a project, the projects that we have determined span all four contents, social studies, science, math, and language arts, so our students are getting a very nice cross-curricular experience through the project. The project, as I said, includes a lot of collaboration, a lot of use of our 21st century skills, and again, that public product piece. At K through six, we have determined a community theme, and our students K through six will each complete a different community-themed project. So at kindergarten, it may start with who are community helpers, how do we find them, what purpose do they serve, and there's a project around that, all the way through sixth and seventh grade, where we begin to get into voting, and how representation, and who represents you and the decisions they make, change your community and the things that happen within it, and the important role that vote in plays, and lots of things in between. So we've got that community connection, K through six, and then it continues in seventh with every vote counts. In eighth grade, we have decided on a middle school transition project, so our eighth graders will be working through a project around helping rising seventh graders transition to middle school, and there'll be pamphlets and videos and lots of things that they will create to help those students transition into the middle school experience. We are also working to incorporate movement, music, and art through the projects that we are providing. We felt it important to bring in some of our electives and those experiences, so we're working through adding those into the projects. And within the school day, we will also have dedicated time for targeted small group instruction in both reading and math. We recognize our students that are coming to summer school have, you know, those needs too, and we not, and we want to not only provide a great cross-curricular, hands-on, authentic project, but also some very specific time dedicated to their very specific English and math needs. So that will also be built into the school day. And we will have a consistent instructional model K through eight, which was resounding in the feedback that we got from teachers who had taught summer school in the past, was a need to have a more consistent approach, K8. So just to kind of summarize, previous summer school experiences, I mean, I've been here 18 years, and it was continually evolving when I was a principal, and has done the same over the last six years, as I've been the director of instruction, and it's been all kinds of different models and methods. We've had scripted intervention programs, we've done some computer-based interventions, we've had options where teachers get a group of kids, they see their data, and they decide kind of what they need to work on and how they want to approach the students. But some things we heard in the feedback was that that's not necessarily engaging for all of our students, and we want the experience to be, and sometimes it just became more of the same from the school year, and so again, not very motivating, and sometimes not as targeted as it might have, need to have been for the children. So as we look ahead to summer of '22, we have a combination of that engaging, real-world project experience, as well as some explicit small group instruction for reading and math, and again, we have that consistent instructional model, K8. So there is still much to do. It is a very large task to reimagine and replan an entire experience K through eight, but as you saw, we have a wonderful team around the table who are dedicated to providing a better, more successful and explicit experience to our students. And so these are all the things that we still have to finalize, and I say finalize because we've been having discussions around all of them since late November, but some of these happen, you know, more towards the end of the planning timeline. So we're working to finalize all of these things, but I want to assure you that they will all be finalized and ready to go when it's time to provide this experience to our students. The other thing that I wanted to highlight are a variety of enrichment opportunities that we're offering this summer. You know, prior to COVID, we were beginning to offer more camps and more opportunities for our students throughout the summer, so many of those are back, and we're excited about that. So we have a variety of things being offered, from an arts symposium, to general sports camp, to some specific sports camps with several of our coaches and teachers from the high school. We've got some marching band experiences from Osborne, and so I just wanted to provide a slide to be sure and point out the opportunities that we have for our students in terms of enrichment as well. And that concludes my summer '22 update.
Thank you, Dr. Kramp, that's some exciting things happening.
It is.
Yeah, it's going to be good to be a student in Manassas City Public Schools over the summer.
Yep, very exciting.
Any questions from the board?
I don't have any questions but a comment. Thank you so much for the foresight to express to us the difference between summer school in years past and what we're planning this summer. It helps us to really visualize what's happening, since we're really not there every day. So I really appreciate your work and your team's work. If you'll express that to them, I'll appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mrs. Stevens?
Yeah. Transportation and food service, that's for the K through eight group?
We will provide transportation and food service K through 12 for our in-person experiences.
Okay, and then the enrichment opportunities? I remember when we met with the academic committee, did you say any of that was going to have transportation?
Yes, Alba, could you go back to that slide for me? That one, right there? So we provide transportation for the summer arts symposium, and we provide, will be providing transportation for the sports camp in July 11th through the 14th, that is a new camp that we're offering through our staff. The other sports camps are more independent, and they offer through, they are run through the coaches, as I said, so we do not provide transportation for those, just the two camps that I mentioned, and then marching band experiences, we have not provided transportation in the past.
Right, well, thank you. This looks, this looks really exciting. I think it'll be a fun experience for our students, and then all these enrichment opportunities. It looks kind of like some kids are going to have a very busy summer.
Yes, we agree, and we are also very excited.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Mrs. Spall?
So I love project-based learning, and I'm very excited to hear that, I'd love to hear that we're giving kids, you know, for, I guess, as they go out, we'll be able to learn how kids are identified or who's able to apply for?
Yes, ma'am, we're working through finalizing the identification process. We don't typically have an application process, K8 is more criteria in terms of the teachers and the school administration coming around and identifying. teachers and the school administration coming around and identifying students to invite for that experience. Some of the, what I shared with the academic committee, there's an inquiry around numbers, and I can't quite tell you yet how many numbers of students we can service because it's very dependent upon the number of teachers that choose to apply and teach summer school. But we are, yes, in the next two months, finalizing that criteria, we'll be able to share that with you, finalizing transportation and food service schedules, all of those pieces that need to happen, and we will be updating all of our communication to parents to explain to them more about what the experience is, you know, is going to be like, encouraging them to, you know, have their student attend. So all of those pieces are still works in progress, but we'll definitely be updated and able to share.
Well, we definitely look forward to that, and I'm not one that loves testing either, but I just, hopefully, we'll see a component where we'll be able to do some kind of pre-imposed assessment to make sure that we're also getting them beyond where they started.
Yes, I think as the model continues to evolve, and we continue to have conversations around evaluating programs, more of that will come into play. What I can tell you is we'll be using end-of-year data to kind of determine flexible groups for students with relation to reading and math support. We'll have beginning-of-the-year data to show how they're coming into us after having had, yes, a summer and other experiences, but certainly having been, you know, with us over the course of three weeks. And we are working to provide a little progress report around reading and math to parents at the end of summer school, as well as a rubric and some feedback around the project experience and the things that the students learned through that and the skills that they're walking away with from that as well. So we are going to be providing that feedback.
I appreciate that. It was a necessary evil, but I love that we're collaborating with, you know, the city and that we'll be able to do all the things that you discussed, so it sounds very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. Brooks?
I just wanted to say thank you for your presentation and for all the work that you and your team, you know, and all of the central office have put into all of this, because, I mean, I'm sitting up here going, I want to go to summer school.
And that's exactly what we were trying to create.
Well, you did an excellent job because I want to go back to school, so.
I appreciate that, thank you. This work is energizing and exciting, and we look forward to seeing it in action.
We all appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Kramp. We look forward to maybe even visiting summer school.
That would be awesome. I'm sure you'll be invited to, at a minimum, view the public products, and we'd love to see you all there.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Next up on the discussion agenda, finance and operations are fiscal year '23 budget updates.
Mr. Morgan. Mr. Morgan, why you was in here? You okay?
Hi.
All right, hi. Some technical adjustments, but good evening, Chairman Seabird, Vice Chair Stevens, Dr. Newman, school board members. Tonight is more for the public, I think, than the school board because we met last Thursday night to have a budget update. So with tonight's meeting, we're going to remind the community of what's in our FY23 budget, but also either inform or remind the community that the General Assembly adjourned from their session without a budget, and we still to this day don't know when they will return and how long it will take before they have an adopted budget. So all of the things that I'm going to talk about tonight are based off of Governor Northam's budget, because that's all the numbers that we have at this time. So everything that I talk about tonight will be, as far as revenue is concerned, and our allocation of that revenue is based off of Governor Northam's budget. Once the General Assembly does come back, does develop a budget that it can agree to and that the governor can agree to, then we will receive data from the DOE regarding MCPS-specific data, then we will conduct another budget work session, at least one, maybe more, with the school board, and then we'll come back again for formal adoption, hopefully in April, but we don't have, we don't know at this point in time. So when we started beginning the budget process, you can see that we requested, we asked for budget input from all of our schools, all of our department heads, and our budget came in at about $125 million, $125,475. The cabinet members, our budget team met with, looked over all of these requests, and we reduced the budget down to about $121 million, $500,000. And based on Governor Northam's budget and the proposed budget, we're roughly $100,000 ahead of that now at $121,559, through some changes that have been made over time, just minor changes, but, you know, changes in lengths of contracts or adding a little bit here and there. But we'll go through all those tonight. But based on Governor Northam's proposed funding, the budget proposal to be adopted tonight, hopefully, will be $121,559,680. So what's in this plan? So it honors 95% of all the requests from the schools' principals for material supplies, purchase services, professional development, other needs for the instructional needs of our students. It balances all of the teacher allocations at each school to coincide with their enrollment and student instructional needs. It adds two gifted resource teachers, one at Dean and one at Round. I say this because this is a long-term thing that we've, probably the last six, seven years, we've tried to get this in. We've got two last year, we're adding two more this year. So this is a big achievement for us to be able to get those gifted resource teachers into our elementary schools. So it adds all the additional teachers and support that the academic committee has reviewed, and one of those programs that was brought forward to the academic committee was the evening school program that we're very excited about at Osborne, where students who are struggling to reach on-time graduation, not due to their instructional or their ability, it's due to their family or financial hardships. There's something happening in their personal life that is preventing them from coming to school or help deterring them from coming to school and hindering their effort to be able to graduate on time. So the evening school program will be something that will be new for us at Johnson Center this fall. Also, we'd be adding math resource teachers, seven math resource teachers at the elementary and intermediate schools. We repurposed ten positions to providing reading resource teachers at all elementary schools, added six more reading resource teachers through the American Rescue Plan Act, funding at intermediate, middle, and high school levels, and would add a counselor position at Metz. So you can see there's a big concentration on the core subject areas of reading and math. For our staff, provides for a colon step increase for all staff totaling 5%. I know we all wish this could be more. There are still two different plans in the General Assembly for this. The House version is a 4% plus a 1% bonus, and the Senate is, I think, 5% plus a $1,000 bonus, I think, is what we learned at the last budget work session. So we don't really know what the state proportionate share that they will pay of this, but this is what's in the budget right now. We've, the superintendent, and I think the school board, has made it a top priority that if we receive additional funding from the state, this would be our top priority going forward, is to provide additional compensation to our teachers. Also in the budget is two professional growth specialists. One of the things that we're excited about that the school division hasn't had before, I don't think, is family liaisons in all schools to help our parents as their children come into school, and we want to bring the community into our schools. We want our parents to be much more involved in their children's lives and their school lives, and so these family liaisons are going to be the bridge to help in that effort. CTE work-based learning specialists, CTE coordinators, another pre-K specialist. With all of our students' needs, we definitely have a huge need for a social worker, and for our students who are having trouble coming to school or missing an inordinate amount of days, we need an attendance officer to work with those students and their parents to try to get them to school every day on time. Under goal number four, we have English language arts coordinator, the math coordinators, ESOL specialists for grades seven through twelve, and we add two information technology support specialists and one application support engineer at our schools. And we also have an additional need for procurement buyer in our finance department. So those are everything that's in the budget, those are the major areas. So how does the budget break down? About almost 87% of our budget is salary and benefits, so we're not atypical from any other school division. We're an employee-based organization, most of our funding goes toward our employees, and you can see the breakdown all the way around the pie chart of where the other funding goes, but the vast majority of our money goes toward salary and benefits for our personnel. So how is the money broken down? Almost 80%, almost 79% of all of our funds are directly budgeted to the schools. That's not to say, though, that these other areas, we are all supporting the schools. When you talk about information technology or student achievement, transportation, facilities, and maintenance, all of those areas funnel directly back into supporting our instruction of our students. So what's next? So you can see that we've met several times, we've had a public hearing, we're meeting tonight to adopt the budget, and then we'll be giving a presentation next Thursday night on March the 30th to city council at the Public Works Conference Room, and we invite everyone, the public, to be there if you so choose, and we will presenting our budget to city council. City council's in a lot of the same situation that we're in, you know, they don't have a state budget either, so they'll be going through the same process, but we'll present our budget to them next Thursday night, and then we'll be, after the school board re-adopts the budget, we will, we may have another meeting with city council to present what, if any, changes are made to our budget. I think that's it. Are there any questions, concerns, comments?
I just have a comment, Ms. Seabird. You know, with the state having such a large surplus this year, I can imagine how difficult it must be for them to really come to a meeting of the minds. It must be a hard job to do on how to, what to do with the surplus, and I'm sure there's many different schools of thought, but it makes it difficult for us, and it makes it difficult for you and your people. So thank you very much for everything you all have done.
Thank you. I have a few ideas I could help them out with.
Anyone else?
Quick question concerning our timeline, our budget timeline. So historically, how long has it taken for the General Assembly to agree on a budget?
Well, historically, they've always adjourned on time, so we, you know, it's very few times that we've run into this situation. Maybe twice in the last 25 years, I've seen them not adjourn on time with a budget. One of those times, they didn't have a budget until mid-June, and I'm hopeful or praying that that doesn't happen this time, because we need to be sending out our teacher contracts to, and formalize our salaries and stuff with our employees and to give them security about what's going to happen next year for them and their employment. So, you know, based on what I have seen so far, the differences between the House and the Senate and the governor, doesn't seem to me that they have too many obstacles to get over. They're very close to a compromise now, so I'm expecting us to have a quick resolution. The main thing that we need to do, or they need to do, is get in the same room together and work this out, and whatever it comes out with, to have a budget. So in the past, when I told you that it was June, there were huge differences between them, and the differences in philosophy were not that far apart, based on what I've seen so far and what I shared at the budget work session last Thursday. So I'm hopeful this will be a quick resolution.
And we're not asking a lot of questions because we've had many, many conversations along the way to get where we are to this point. For teacher contracts, our goal is to get them out when we would normally get them out and not delay them?
So right now, I talked to Mrs. Wingfield the other day, you know, when do contracts normally go out? And we normally go out in May, and so right now, we're tentatively on schedule. So, I mean, I'm still optimistic that by our board meeting in April, that we can have a budget to adopt, and if so, that'll be great. You know, if it starts running over into May or later, it'll be much more difficult, okay?
If there's a delay in getting out contracts, have we identified a way to notify our faculty and staff so they don't start to worry?
We will, and, you know, one of the good things is that we're all in this together, right? Prince William and Fairfax and everybody's in the same boat that we are, right? And so there won't be any contracts issued from any school division, so we won't be different from anybody else until such a time as that we have an adopted budget. I think we can send letters of intent, we can send comment, we can send messages out to our staff to inform them of what's going on if we get to that point. And I'm, like I said, I'm optimistic and hopeful that we will not get to that point, and we'll have resolution relatively soon.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. Thank you for the work that you and your team have done in preparing this and all the updates and keeping us updated with everything that's going on, because I know it's a frequently changing situation, so we really appreciate it up here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. I did want to mention that when we do go to present at city council, it is actually Wednesday, the 30th, as long as we approve it later, later tonight. So we'll move along to the action agenda. First item is our proposed health insurance premiums. School board annually approves the health insurance plans and premiums. The health insurance plans and premiums were discussed at the March one budget meeting and the March eighth school board meeting. Can I get a motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion that the school board of the city of Manassas approved the FY 2022, 2023 insurance plans and premiums as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Brooks, that the school board of the city of Manassas approved the fiscal year 2022, 2023 insurance plans and premiums as presented. Any discussion? Seeing and hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next on the action agenda is our employee compensation. School board annually establishes and approves salary schedules and compensation for all employees. The salary schedules and compensations were discussed by the school board at the March first budget meeting and the March eighth school board meeting.
Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that, am I in the right spot? Just want to make sure. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the school board of the city of Manassas approved the proposed SY 2022, 2023 employee salary schedule compensation as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Hollingsworth, seconded by Mrs. Stevens, that the school board of the city of Manassas approved the proposed school year 2022, 2023 employee salary schedules and compensation as presented. Is there any discussion? Seeing and hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Next up is our CIP and five-year forecast.
I'd like to make a motion that the school board of the city of Manassas approved the FY 2023 to 2027 five-year forecast as presented and authorize the school board chairman to transmit the 2023, 2027 CIP and five-year forecast to the city council of Manassas in accordance with school board policy, Virginia State Code, and joint budget agreement.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Brooks, that the school board of the city of Manassas approved the fiscal year 2023 to 2027 five-year forecast as presented and authorize the school board chairman to transmit the 2023, 2027 CIP and five-year forecast to the city council of Manassas in accordance with school board policy, Virginia State Code, and joint budget agreement. I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens, seconded by Mrs. Brooks, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the fiscal year 2023 to 2027 five-year forecast as presented and authorize the School Board Chairman to transmit the 2023, 2027 CIP and five-year forecast to the City Council of Manassas in accordance with the School Board policy, Virginia State Code, and joint budget agreement. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven, zero. School year, School Board budget for 2023.
Chair, I'd like to make a motion that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget as presented in the amount of $140,534,120, and all the commas, sorry, and authorize the School Board Chairman to transmit these estimated to the City Council of Manassas in accordance with the School Board policy and the Virginia State Code.
Second. I have a motion by Mrs. Brooks, seconded by Mrs. Williams, that the School Board of the City of Manassas approved the fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget as presented in the amount of $140,534,120 and authorize the School Board Chairman to transmit these estimated to the City Council of Manassas in accordance with School Board policy and Virginia State Code. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries seven, zero. We look forward to presenting that to the Mayor and City Council on Wednesday, the School Board members' comments. First, we'd like to hear from Ms. Tanali.
Good evening to the School Board and everyone that is joining us tonight. I wanted to first recognize our band for their leadership and achievements that they have earned and also for earning a blue ribbon, which has only been done twice. And I wanted to thank our board for offering all these summer opportunities to all of our students. And I also wanted to recognize our staff and hard-working students on completing a semester and a half in this difficult transition from online school to in-person learning. I know it's been a difficult year for everyone, but I just wanted to let everyone know that we're almost done. Spring break is just around the corner, and I feel like that would be a great time for everyone to really spend time with their family and to take all of that stress off. And I did want to stress that I know a lot of people will be traveling during spring break, and I just wanted to remind everyone to stay safe, keep your distance, and stay sanitized. And thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Tanali.
Good evening, all Board members, Dr. Newman and everyone who's joined us here tonight. First, I'd like to say congratulations to the OHS Band and the other music departments who continue to make Osborne great. I'd also like to say good luck to all the students who are going to be taking the SAT tomorrow at Osborne High School. I know this is some big stuff for those of us who are juniors and some seniors as we all take our journey for after high school. And lastly, I would just like to say for everyone to please continue to support all students, teachers, parents, and all of their staff that we know as we enter this last quarter of this very interesting school year. So thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mrs. Williams, do you have comments this evening?
Very interesting is the correct statement. And thank you both for your comments. You're always so thoughtful. And of course, I congratulate our band, but I also have to congratulate the orchestra and choir as well. Getting a blue ribbon status again is very exciting for Osborne High School, and that's something I would love to brag about. I do have some prepared comments. I wanted to say that the mark of the end of the pandemic as we knew it in March 2019 is finally here. The pandemic has heightened learning gaps, social, emotional, and behavioral issues in which teachers, staff, administrations, and boards will have to face in a creative and thoughtful way. We all have a lot of pivotal, pivotal decisions to make, and I believe that the incredible work being done by everyone here at Manassas City Public Schools has been reflected not only in this budget, but in the changes and additions which have been reflected and enhanced, have been made to enhance our teachers, our staff, and more importantly, our students' experiences. Make no mistake about it, all of our sleeves are still rolled up. We've got a lot more work to do, but I'm excited together that we are going to truly make the experiences for our students much better after this pandemic, and I'm excited to be here to help.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Mr. Hollingsworth?
Yes. Yay, band! Congratulations for setting the standard of excellence for future musicians to come into Osborne. Make sure your chops are up to par when you come to Osborne as a musician. Also, I'd just like to, again, welcome Mr. Morris to the Manassas City family, and everyone be safe over spring break. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hollingsworth. Mrs. Brooks?
Okay, so I'm only barely in, and everyone's already said everything I wanted to say. So, yeah, ditto for, congratulations and kudos to the, to all the performing arts at Osborne for this blue ribbon. It's a wonderful, you know, privilege to be able to say that we, we deserve, that you guys all earned that. And I also wanted to echo the welcome to Mr. Morris. It's so wonderful to have you as part of our team. Welcome to the family. And thank you to everyone else, the staff, teachers, Central Office, all of you, for everything that you're doing for our schools because, you know, you're, you're making our community great and our city great, and we really appreciate it. Thank you.
So true, Mrs. Brooks. Thank you. Mr. Ichbal?
Hello. Good evening, everyone. I also just wanted to echo my fellow Board members and student representatives' comments in congratulating our Osborne Band Orchestra and Choir on receiving superior assessments as well as the VMEA Blue Ribbon Award. And I also wanted to echo the welcome to Mr. Morris. I'm looking forward to working with you, and I'm sure my Board members can agree with that as well. I also wanted to talk a little bit about lacrosse. I had the opportunity to step out of my comfort zone during the past couple of weeks and attend a couple Osborne lacrosse games. And they actually had four games back-to-back in a single week, and they managed to win two of the four games, beating Potomac High School 10 to 5 and Parkview High School 7 to 5. And it looked really great in the field. It was clear that they'd been putting in a lot of good work in practice. So I want to congratulate Coach Sam McLeod, as well as Assistant Coaches Will Sorto and Anthony Arigo, as well as the entire Osborne Lacrosse Team on their two victories. These kids are really great, and I'm going to catch their next home game on April 7 at 7:00 PM, and I hope to see you all there. So mark your calendars. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ichbal. Mrs. Spall, you have comments tonight?
Just a few. I wanted to say that I'm also caught following lacrosse closely and enjoying the new lights on the field. I think we're going to have a unveiling about those sometime soon. We are heavily into budget season, and we thank everyone for their hard work in preparing that budget and also bringing us up to speed on the different elements of it. I also wanted to congratulate Osborne not only for their Blue Ribbon Award, but also for being recognized as a common sense school for digital learning and citizenship. And welcome, Mr. Morris. And I heard that Ms. Tanali's birthday was last week, so I wanted to wish her a happy 18th birthday.
Happy birthday! Thank you, Mrs. Spall. Mrs. Stevens?
I don't have a lot to say. Everybody said everything that needs to be said. We're in the home stretch. We're almost there. We're in the last quarter, so we can hold strong until the end of the year, and then we get to say we made it through the year. Spring break is right around the corner, so please be safe, wear your seatbelt, take precautions. If you don't feel well, stay home. If you are sick and you need anything, call your doctor. That's what they're there for. But otherwise, enjoy the rest of the year, and good luck to everyone who's taking an SAT tomorrow. You guys can do it. You can rock it, and you'll be amazing.
Thank you, Mrs. Stevens. Okay, my turn, and I have an announcement. I spoke to the Osborne Theater Director, and she has news about the Spring Musical. Osborne Theater presents Rock of Ages. And if you don't know what that is about, I'm going to tell you. It's the tail end of the big, bad 1980s in Hollywood, and the party has been raging hard. Aquanet, Lycra, and heavy metal flow freely at one of Sunset Strip's last legendary venues, a place where legendary rocker Stacy Jackson takes the stage and groupies line up for their chance at an autograph. Admits the madness, aspiring rock star and resident busboy Drew longs to take the stage as the next big thing and longs for small-town girl Sherry, fresh off the bus from Kansas with stars in her eyes. But the rock and roll fairy tale is about to end, and when German developers sweep into town with plans to turn the fabled Sunset Strip into just another capitalist strip mall, can Drew, Sherry, and the gang save the strip and themselves before it's too late? Only the music of hit bands Styx, Journey, Bon Jovi, Whitesnake, and more can hold the answer. The show will be performed April 1st, 2nd, and 3rd at Osborne High School. General admission is $12, and students and staff, it's only $6. Tickets will be available on brownpapertickets.com and will also be announced through social media. Thank you very much, and I think that wraps it up. May I have a motion?
I'd like to make, we have a closed session, correct?
Oh.
Yeah. So I'd like to make a motion that the School Board of the City of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, is amended for the following purposes. 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1, Discussion of Personnel Matter, PERS 2122-0465.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Stevens and a second by Mrs. Spall, that the School Board of the City of Manassas enter a closed session pursuant to exemptions from open meetings allowed by Section 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1 of the Code of Virginia, 1950, is amended for the following purposes. 2.2-3711, Part A, Paragraph 1, Discussion of Personnel Matter, PERS 2122-0465. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven, zero.